Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to the Select Board's meeting for Monday, August 24th, 2020. This evening, we have an agenda that includes a number of items that we typically see on each Monday night, and that usually includes COVID world according to Chief Cassidy. Would you like to join us, Chief, and give our board an update on how our community is faring?
I would be delighted.
How are you, Chief?
I'm very well, thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, in terms of our numbers, which is the way I normally start the weekly report, unfortunately, with two new cases reported last Wednesday and three new cases reported today, we now have five active cases. Total of 69 cases since we began tracking those back in early spring. 62 have recovered, two COVID-related fatalities, and as I said, that leaves five active cases. Don't have a lot of demographics. I can tell you that four of those five active cases are at single-family homes and one is at a condominium. But I can't tell you age, I can't tell you gender, but I can tell you that they are dispersed throughout town and they are not clustered.
Can I ask you a question before you proceed?
Yes.
As we imagine the school season getting underway in a month or so.
Yes.
In the event that these types of cases emerge, will there be any contact tracing that has relevance to the school population? Parents of, children's living with SED. Is there a handshake there to alert the schools of any potential problems?
So, the relationship between contact tracing done by the schools and contact tracing done by the Board of Health is a very close relationship. There are guidelines that have come out and have been clarified from DPH and DESI with regards to how to track if a student, or if someone on the bus, or if a teacher, or some other staff member. And then, the question comes down to if you have someone in a household who is sending a child to school. And so, that would be all part of the work that our surveillance is done by the outside vendor, by Salmon VNA out of Milford. And so, when they check in with a positive case, they would be explaining to them how it is that they would isolate at home, how they would have a separate bedroom, how they would have separate meals. Things would be left for them, they wouldn't be sharing anything in common, and they wouldn't have contact with anyone else in the family. And so, that, if there were a case where there were a school-aged child, that might get reported to the Board of Health. But again, unless there is a possible exposure, it would not likely be directly reported to the school for confidentiality reasons.
Do you think there should be a report there? So, if a child, a school-aged child, has a parent who becomes COVID-positive and it's known through the Maven system.
Right.
And it's a Friday, should the schools be aware that that child was in school the previous week and is due to report on Monday, given all the other strategies that are put in place to isolate the affected adult?
So, part of the contact tracing by Salmon is the nursing consultant talking with the person who receives the positive test. And they will talk to them about who they've had close contact with, and then, from there, they'll try and figure out who that individual has had close contact with. So, I think it would be handled on a case-by-case basis. We can't ju-- for confidentiality reasons, we can't just start sharing names. I mean, as Emergency Management Director, to this point with 69 positive cases, I still don't have access to names. I only have access to addresses.
Personally, I just see a bit of a loophole there. That's why the questions are coming.
No, I understand. And I've got a good working relationship with the schools. Perhaps I can back-end this. And in the same way, I had a database for everyone who attended town meeting, and I had a database for everyone who registered for graduation. I could request a searchable database of addresses for--
Students.
Students who are enrolled. And then, anytime I got a new case, I could double-check against that, which would be one way for us to try and address it.
Do you folks have a reaction to that at all? Will we allow them to go on here?
I mean--
Could we start with Ben?
Yes, of course.
Anything, Ben?
No, I mean, you know, it puts you in a kind of a difficult spot, right? You know, and, you know, we've got to make sure we're maintaining privacy, but we also need to make sure that people who need to be aware are made aware. And I know you're doing the best you can, and you have rules and systems in place that kind of prevent you from doing something that might make logical sense, but it has other, there are other purposes. So, no, I don't really, I don't really have any questions. I just, you know, I get it, I understand. And, you know, we're doing the best we can, and I understand. So--
Go ahead, Tina.
I guess my question would be, does the school have a mechanism in place by which a family member could report? Have they broadcast that to families? Have they asked families to do that? And if so, do they have a mechanism by which a family member could pick up the phone and say, "I just went to Walgreens, I just got my free test results back, we were about to go away for the weekend, we're not now, I'm positive, and I know, number one, I know I'm supposed to call the schools because they've told me to."
Right.
And number two, here's the number I called to provide that information. Because that seems to me, in the broader picture, to be what's really asked of us is to take on that personal responsibility, unless we're saying that there's a responsibility for the Board of Health and the School Department to keep track of this information. But I don't see DESI saying that, I don't hear you saying that.
No.
So therefore, the responsibility really falls on the individual to report. And if that's the case, and that's the assumption we're going on, then how does that individual know to contact the schools?
So, I think it would be part of a back-ended notification, because right now, the certification when a parent or guardian sends a student to school for in-person learning, they are certifying that their child does not have a fever, does not have symptoms, and has not been exposed to anyone who has a known or suspected case.
Yeah.
So, if they choose to withhold a child from attendance in person, it would then be incumbent on them to share the reason why, as opposed to just--
Okay.
They have a sniffle versus--
Yeah.
And one of the challenges with a school population is kids talk. And we did have a bit of a scare--
Yeah.
--at ESY this summer, where two students reported to other classmates that someone in their household--
Yeah.
--had a positive test.
Yeah.
And that immediately escalated. So, there is a mechanism to try and keep that confidential and not go to an extreme in terms of the response.
So, you're saying that when I call on a sick child, as I've normally done, I report why they're out?
Right.
And you're saying that same mechanism's in place, the parent would just, or the guardian would just then report, this is why the child's out?
And that could then be shared with that school nurse, so that they can initiate a contact tracing for that classroom or that cohort.
Then I guess my follow-up question on that is, is there training on the receiving end, the person who's taking those phone calls off of that recorded line, that they know to act upon that information, if that's the intent?
I can certainly follow up with the lead school nurse. Absolutely.
That was my only question, John.
Okay, keep going, Chief. Thank you.
Absolutely. So then, I realize you've got a lot of things on your agenda tonight, so the one other thing that I want to bring you up to date on is requests that have come in. And I know last week, we had talked about sort of a flow chart for decision-making. So, I believe our tech folks have a flow chart that they can throw up on the screen. They can do some screen sharing here. So, this seeks to codify what we had discussed previously, which was if it was on the spreadsheet initially, then they can go ahead and make that purchase and submit that to the accountant for payment. If it was not part of the original request, then they would make that request to me so that I can determine whether it may or may not be a CARES Act eligible expense, at which point, I would then bring it to you. If you approve it, they can move forward with the expenditure, and if it is denied, then they would need to find another funding source. And I know we had had a conversation with another elected, a member of another elected board, that if they were bringing a request to me, that you would want to see a vote of--
Correct.
--of that board. So, my intention is, if this flow chart is approved in its current form, then I will not only give this to department heads, but also to other boards and committees, so that they understand the process, and I can include in my email explanation that if it's a board or committee, that you'd like to see a vote before a request comes to us.
Any questions, Ben?
No, I think that makes sense. I think that's, that works.
Tina?
Nope.
Mike, just a couple of things. You're right, we did talk about the need for any board, any elected board requesting CARES Act funding, they need to have a vote before it gets into the box currently shown as request funding from the Emergency Management Director, before it gets there.
Right.
You need to put either an asterisk or another box that suggests we want a vote to back up the request.
Okay.
All right. And furthermore, is the FEMA Act funding, it says refers to CVRF funds distributed to the Town Hallson through, A&amp;F does not apply to funds distributed by DC or DPH. I understand that, but I'm not sure that people at home understand the distinction. So, if you could offer that and explain what that means specifically.
Certainly. So, this flow chart specifically refers to the $1,317, $137 that your board applied for back in June from the Division of Administration and Finance, over which your board has control. There are other CARES Act funds which are being made available to our community. Some of them are going to the schools through the Department of Early and Secondary Education. This process will not apply. And also, the Board of Health received targeted funds that were directly distributed to the Department of Public Health, over which their board has jurisdiction, and yours does not. So, that's why the asterisk and the explanation.
One last comment. Would you kindly take the revised form once you put in the vote piece, and I think you probably were planning to do this, but put it under the COVID website header?
Oh, absolutely.
I think that's where you're putting it, but that's where it can be filed, right?
Most definitely. Yep. And I will put in an action item for a vote, if it's a board or committee, between the diamond and the request funding from--
Yes.
--Emergency Management Director.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. So, in that vein, I do have one request that has come in. That would be for the senior center has requested not to exceed $999 for a camera and sound system to expand remote programming with seniors. So, this was not part of the original layout of anticipated technology. This has been something that the Technology Director has been researching. The most that this would cost would be $999. There may be a cheaper solution, and he's going to make sure that he gets what is best for the town. But we wanted to get the authorization while he's finishing up his final research.
And with respect to its utility and purpose under the COVID guidelines, can you explain what it's going to be used for?
So, it would be sort of a combination of two different pieces of technology that we have in this room right now. Right now, you have a conference phone on the desk, and you have a laptop in the back of the room with a camera. This would be a web camera with basically a dedicated sound system and amplifier, and both speakers and microphones, that was all in one setup that would be designed to be used for a large room, a large, so they could use it in their large meeting room at the senior center, where they normally would be doing, whether it was yoga or, you know, exercise--
The virtual connection to the clients.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. I'll, would you like to take a vote?
I would like a vote.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of not more than $999 for the purposes identified by Chief Cassidy for the senior center. Ben?
I'll make that motion, but I did have a question for the chief. So, that's inclusive of a computer and a sound system, but they have the bandwidth? They don't need any additional infrastructure to handle the traffic, the web traffic?
Correct. They're connected to the town network.
So, they're, okay, so they already have--
And with the core switch that you approved a few weeks ago, that will certainly help that bandwidth issue.
Okay. All right, then, that's it.
Do you have a second, Tina?
I have a second with a comment. Council on Aging is elected?
Appointed. Oh, is it?
I feel like it is.
I should know that. I think it is elected. I beg your pardon.
So, I'm thinking that--
Just to the point that we may be for on getting the vote from them.
Contingent upon a vote by the Council on Aging.
Sure. Okay.
So, I'll amend the motion to include that.
Okay. Then I second the motion.
Good catch. Yes. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in this post that carries.
Also bring you up to date on a previous vote that you'd made on August 10th. You had authorized up to $4,000 for a ballot box for the town clerk. The actual cost of that is going to come in under $4,000. And so, I am wondering if you would allow as part of that initial approval, $128 for technology for a camera dedicated to that box. We had discussed two different types of being able to monitor that box for security purposes. We talked about something connected to our existing security system for the building. That would not be able to be rolled out in time for this ballot initiative. However, the thought is that in order to add exterior security cameras to this building, which would transcend a COVID need for the ballot box, that that would be something that we would apply to Maya as part of their risk management grant program, which will approve up to $10,000. And we think we've got a pretty good chance of being able to receive that funding. We've got a great relationship with the folks at Maya, and most risk management initiatives we've brought to them in the past would support that. But this would be $128 specifically for a solar rechargeable camera that would be fixed on just this ballot box, so that we can make sure it's covered as soon as it's installed that back.
Is it IR, and can it be used after hours and under--
Yes.
--weather conditions? Okay.
Yes, it's similar to equipment that we've deployed at other town locations earlier this year with success.
Any questions on that, Ben?
No.
All entertain a motion, Ben, if you'd like to make it.
So moves.
Ms. Heim?
Second, yes.
Okay. All in this favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries, Mike.
And then, the last request, and this was a concept that was first brought to us by Ms. Heim, when we were discussing potential uses of CARES Act funds back in May, June. And that would be with regards to dedicating some of the $1.3 million that the town received from the Division of Administration and Finance for rent or mortgage relief. Working with the town administrator, working with the Director of Youth and Family Services, we believe that we've identified a system that would allow us to assist people in our community who might have this need, especially as checks are starting to dwindle from the federal government, and yet, the need persists in our community. And so, we do have a draft, which I believe was in your packet, for consideration. And our proposal would be that rather than this board or any town employee be doing the screening of those applications, that that would be done by a nonprofit entity in our community that already has a system in place, already is used to working with people who have a need. And the town administrator checked with the auditor to see if it would be permissible for us to be able to hand over a portion of the funds to be administered by the Community Action Fund for this purpose.
Did you want to speak to this?
I have a, I think, a clarifying comment in that the Youth Advisory Board will be the one reviewing the applications. We have the Youth and Family Services Director on the call, so Jackie, please correct me if I'm mistaken on this. The Community Action Fund as a volunteer organization would not be the ones to approve the applications. That would come--
But they're the fiduciary agent?
That's correct, yes.
Good, good catch.
And that the Youth and Family, excuse me, Youth Advisory Board, as an appointed board of this board, will be the ones to approve eligibility. I think that's worth mentioning, because I think that puts the oversight--
Yes.
--for those decisions back to the Select Board, as opposed to a community-based board that we wouldn't necessarily have oversight. So, that's why I wanted to make sure that was clarified. I'm hearing nothing from Jackie.
Thank you for clarifying, Tina. I just want to jump in and say that the Community Action Fund does play a role in addition to the Youth Advisory Board, in that they approve the final amount, and they are the ones that cut the check.
Jackie? Jackie, I'm sorry to interrupt you. If you could just introduce yourself kindly.
So, sorry, yeah. So, I actually usually start with that. I always like to take an opportunity to let people know, you know, what Youth and Family Services does in the community, what my role is in town. So, I'm Jackie Weiner, and I am the Director at Holliston Youth and Family Services. And we have a mission to provide counseling services and social services to health and residents, and to promote behavioral health and wellness for the entire community. And my role is to provide counseling, clinical consultation, to supervise our other clinicians, to help all staff provide resources and information to town residents, and to provide educational opportunities, activities, and to promote emotional and mental health wellness. So, these funds would be, so individuals who need rent and mortgage relief options would be coming through Youth and Family Services because of confidentiality. So, we can protect their personal health information and any other information that they're struggling with and going through. And then, what happens from there is our Youth Advisory Board oversees my department, and so, they have, they know of any CAF-related needs, or any, they will know of any rent and mortgage relief needs that are happening without, with confidentiality in mind. So, they won't know specifics. And then, what happens is I approve it with my board, and then, it goes to the Community Action Fund for final approval based on the amount that needs to be given to that individual. And so, they are the ones who then write the check, and then, I receive the check and give it to the resident, and it gets mailed into wherever it needs to go.
Thank you.
So, I hope that clarifies it a little bit.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, the initial proposal would be that the town would disburse $25,000 to the Community Action Fund to be used for this purpose. And again, this was something the town administrator checked with the auditor on. And if the funds weren't used within their period of eligibility, because they would set a specific period of time during which they would accept applications, then the balance would be returned to the town. If they found that it was oversubscribed and they had more requests than they had in that initial amount to be authorized by the town, that would be another case where we would bring this back to the board, and we would ask if you were interested in putting a little bit more money towards the rent and mortgage relief.
Any questions, Ben?
Yeah, actually, I do have a few about this. So, have other communities been doing this kind of program around us? And I just would be wondering, like, what kind of experiences they've had in terms of how many people are coming forward and how much money they're dispersing for this particular program?
I think Jackie could speak to Ashland, which is probably the best comment.
Yep. So, Ashland has a fund right now, COVID-related fund for rent and mortgage relief options. It didn't initially start for COVID-related needs. It started with their housing preservation fund, and in collaboration with their housing authority, they were trying to come up with some, a program for Ashland residents for rent and mortgage relief purposes. And so, what happened was COVID happened, and then, they were able to get CARES Act funds. And so, right now, what they're doing is they're offering these funds, and if and when they run out of these funds, they'll be able to access their housing trust money to continue this program. They have had 19 applicants. They've only had two months of this program so far, so they've dispersed, I believe, $15,000 at this point, within two months. And they, sorry, I'm just going through my notes, sorry. And within those two months, they've been, they've offered $15,000. They've had 19 applicants so far, and they have $35,000 in their fund. So, they don't anticipate running out of their funds before December, based off of that number. But that's the, that's the setup in Ashland. And they also have, you know, a different type of program, because they're helping move people into housing in addition to their COVID-related funds. So, it's operated a little bit differently, but it's very similar to how we would be modeling our program as well.
So, the information that we have here is based on Ashland's model? Is that accurate? Like, this, this kind of, yes?
We researched a lot of different programs around the country, because this mortgage and rent relief is available across the country for any municipality that receives CARES Act funds.
Okay.
So, we modeled it based, not only on local, but also looking at some national models as well, trying to find the best fit for our community in terms of application and flow.
Can I just--
I've looked into SMOCK and other entities and agencies that provide rent and mortgage relief options, just to see how they approach this area and kind of what their sort of philosophy is on supporting families who are either at risk of eviction, or who are in a financial situation, that they cannot make their payments and then will be evicted or possibly homeless. And have put together sort of a model based off of, not only these national models that are happening with COVID, but also other mental health agencies, social services agencies that have been doing this forever. And I've also reached out to Brian Clancy, who is the Holliston Chair for the, not the Housing Authority, but the, I believe also the Preservation in Town. And he also kind of looked over these documents as well. So, we've consulted with many people on it and looked at many different models and how it's being done in other communities.
So, I got to be honest, like, I think this is a great idea. I just, I'm not, I'm a little confused. I feel like this should be like an agenda item. I think this is a bigger conversation than we're having right now, because I'm, I think there needs to be a little, I'd like a little more time to research this myself, too, to understand, because this is, some of this, like, the Youth Advisory Board, I don't see it in the document that we have. So, I'm kind of confused on the mechanisms that we're using, because we're saying something different than the document that I'm getting. And I'm just, I'm, I don't see it in here, and maybe I'm missing it. But I just, I have some reservations about it. I think it's a great idea, and I'd love to help everybody. I'm just, I mean, I have a little bit of concern there, and I'm also concerned about that we're adding another program, and I don't feel like we have a full sense of, like, I still want to know what the heck the schools are doing, and I don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we have a, a, something that we're trying to fund that's in addition, and we're trying to just get things moving ahead in other programs. I just, so, all I would ask is that we put this off and put it on the agenda next week and talk about it a little more. And I understand there's a need, I understand there's people out there that are, that need this, but I would just, I'm just asking for that, just a week that we can put it on the agenda.
Can I just, to the point on the process?
Sure.
So, the CAF, the way that I viewed this, and as the chief said, I went down multiple rabbit holes in terms of the finances from the town side.
Sure.
So, the fact that the mechanism exists in the CAF to disperse these funds was probably the biggest hurdle to get over, right? Having that mechanism in place, because quite frankly, the town cutting checks to individuals was going to be probably a non-starter.
Mm-hmm.
So, the discussion is twofold. One, these dollars were sort of assumed in the $1.3 million, right? So, that's part of it. And the fact that the CARES funds can, quite frankly, absolutely be used for this, and other communities are doing it.
Sure.
Ashland was just the example locally. So, the $25,000 as well is a number that, sort of going back and forth and talking to the auditors, makes sense in a number of aspects, because first of all, it's sending a dollar amount that, if we feel the need, that there's going to be a specific audit to this amount, right? That anything that's going through the fund gets audited. That can be done through the single audit process. We can pay for that as a separate audit, and actually, the cost of that can also be covered through the CARES fund. And then, the $25,000 amount, right? If it's proved that there is a need within the community, there's always the ability to then do a second funding. And if there isn't, right, then that would be proof of concept, and we would discuss potentially doing more if that's what the board wanted. And if there weren't that $25,000 amount being returned, is sort of, from, and I don't want to use this word, but it's the auditor's word, it's essentially a negligible amount within the $1.3 million. And so, those are the types of things that, from the town side, to protect the town, those were, those are the parameters on this side of it. The fact that the CAF has been sort of doing this, this concept, has been, you know, the privacy aspect at all as the requister, just makes it a lot easier to sort of not have to roll up something significant in this regard. And that's sort of how it developed over the past couple of weeks. But I know that it had been discussed before I even got here.
It was, yes.
And so, this was just the mechanism, I think, that makes the most sense, but we can absolutely bring it back if that's the will of the board.
Anything else, Ben?
No.
Tina?
Yeah, so I have a comment and a question. I guess my comment would be is I'm impressed and pleased to see the due diligence that you and Jackie and you, Travis, put into the decision to come up with this program and the process by which one could apply. I think it's very thoughtful. I think it's very thorough. And so, I just wanted to say that I'm impressed and appreciate the effort. And then, I have a question, actually, for Ben. Just clarification on the premise of your concern--
Yeah.
--that we would come back and revisit next week. I have no objection, by the way, to doing that, although obviously, I'm anxious to see this move forward. But a question on the premise of your concerns. Is the premise of your concern more so you'd like an answer for the schools and their need? Would they need this 2% of the-- Would they need this 2% of the total amount that was approved to the town? Are they in that grade of a need for this? Or is the premise of your concern question, is there a benefit or a need, benefit to or a demonstrated benefit to or need for this relief in our community? Is it one of those two or is there another?
Well, I mean, the comments last week, I mean, you know, we had, John mentioned that, you know, some of the numbers that you had talked to the schools about were going to blow out the 1.3 million.
No.
Or more than the 1.3 million is what you were saying.
Not, there are models. And so what the schools are planning to do, first and foremost, is to use a separate CARES Act funding stream. This is the per pupil model, the $225 per person.
Yeah.
And that would generate somewhere around $650,000. That's the pool of money they're using for reopening and a hiring of staff.
Sure.
Ramp up and so forth. The CARES Act balance that we're currently sitting on right now was discussed as a possible relief into calendar year '21. It's something that we talked about because there's no signal right now from the state that a second phase is coming. There are some smoke signals and there's certainly some unexpendated balance on the $2.3 billion of CARES Act, but nothing official.
Right.
And so, well, there may be a second phase that would fund the second semester starting in January. We thought, you know what, if there was a balance of CARES Act that we were sitting on, there's a way we could help ourselves and that's what we discussed. But it was really a relief valve. Is that the best way to put it? Mike?
Absolutely. And so the comment that you may have heard of blowing out was the reopening costs as modeled as of last week, we're going to blow out that 225 per pupil. But the difference between that cost and that 225 per pupil can absolutely be absorbed within the unobligated funds that we have in the CARES Act right now.
So, okay. So there's, so, okay, all right. I still would like to hold off and I'd like to have a little, I'd like to have a little time to understand a little bit more for my own edification. I can't speak for the, you know, if you two want to do your own thing, you certainly can.
Absolutely.
But I'd like to, I'd like to wait and talk about it next week personally.
Did you have anything else to add?
I do not, no.
And if memory serves me correct, I apologize, these discussions were before you got on the board, right? So he's coming in late to the.
Yep. That's true, but, you know, that's true. Jackie, I don't have a question so much as I do have a point to make. To Ben's point, we received sort of an email from Travis that articulated the four corners of this idea. And as you were speaking, I was waiting to hear something I didn't hear and it leaves me a little cautious as well, thinking that I believe the approval for any of these funds needs to come directly from this board. And, you know, we don't need to hear about the case-by-case incidences. I would think some kind of a mechanism from you to us or to us through Mike Cassidy explaining the justification for each of the cases that come through without any identifiers, of course. You know, case number 123, here are the circumstances, the board reviewed this, that, and the other thing. We examined the wants and needs and applicability under the terms of this grant and we took a vote and here it is. As long as there's some process, then we take a vote to endorse the expense. I don't feel like we should, with all due respect, I don't want to delegate that authority back down to you folks with a pool of money to start distributing it. I think that's abdication of what we're supposed to be doing here. Okay? You follow what I'm saying on that?
I do. I'm not sure I agree entirely. I think that, I, as I mentioned to Jackie when we discussed this earlier, I have, I think that as a board, I would like to see us demonstrate the trust in the decision-making of our Youth and Family Services Director and the Advisory Board that oversees her and her duties. I think that they are appointed by us because they demonstrate the ability to make these decisions on our behalf. I do think we're wading into sensitive territory. I can't think of an experience in the past year or so of me being on the board where we've been privy to any, any information that would determine a decision to the tune of, you know, 800 or 1,200 or I'm looking at the maximum amounts that could be approved, up to $2,000 of that type of information. I'm just looking for an analogy by which this board has acted.
I can give you a straight-up analogy. The Board of Assessors deals with such relief on an annual basis and it's all done in open session with a high level of confidentiality to each applicant. I'm not looking to.
Yeah.
Get into any details associated with the applicant. I just want to ensure that the string of authority comes back here and that through Jackie's report to the chief, we have a sense of what is being asked, that there was a process followed and we endorsed it. And you brought up the word trust. I'll push back on you. I don't think it's a question of trust at all. It's a question of checks and balances. And we've just put in place a mechanism to allow any CARES Act request to come to us after it's voted upon by another board. Because we want to see the endorsement of a board before it gets to us with final approval. That's checks and balances, Tina.
Yeah, yeah. I hear you. I don't disagree fundamentally. It's just that I think that, for me, the check and balance, for me personally, was the $25,000 cap that we're going to give. Then we get, we got a report back from the Youth and Family Services Director on the type of need that they're seeing, the type of applications that they're seeing and whether or not they think that's sufficient or we need to go up or we even go down. To me, that was the check and balance that was in place. And when I say trust, it was that the board will be making these decisions thoughtfully, using the process that they have in place and that we would accept that as sufficient. So I think it's just two different ways of looking at.
Follow-up question for you, Jackie. If you've mentioned this, forgive me. When an individual would make application to this program, have you folks put in place any kind of a system of application to make sure that the applicant meets the qualifications under the CARES Act?
Yeah, we have an application and it essentially looks at many different factors. We ask who's living in the home, who, how many dependent children are there? We ask if there's been any military involvement. We ask what their employment status is. We ask what their health insurance status is. We want to know if they're receiving any type of Section 8 vouchers or housing assistance such as the RASH program. We want to know, is their mortgage under forbearance? We want to know what their mortgage payment is.
Forgive me, is that, is that application as you described it constructed by you or is that a CARES Act application for this purpose?
That was constructed by me in my research of all these other programs that are providing rent and mortgage relief. And to meet the eligibility of the program, you have to show that there has been a, you know, either a loss of income or a financial barrier that's preventing somebody from being able to pay their mortgage. So there's a whole section on the application where they have to demonstrate what that issue is and how they, what steps they have taken already to, to address it. And so then we have a clear picture as to, you know, who is applying and what their financial needs are at that time. So it's almost like, you know, a needs assessment, if you will, in terms of how we screen each applicant. And there's many programs out there that are providing financial relief to community members in the Commonwealth. And so we know of those programs and so when we're screening, we're asking some of those questions to see if they've been able to access any of those programs. When we all met, Travis, she, Cassidy and Tina and John Drowham, when we were talking about kind of what a program would look like, we really want to fill a gap for community members who don't, who are not financially eligible for Section 8 housing or subsidized housing. So these are folks that are being turned away from other funds because they don't technically meet that threshold. So these are people who are kind of on the margin, who just need a little bit of help catching up. And it only pays the principal and the interest. It does not pay the extra. So they're still responsible for paying a certain amount each month. So this just is, the amounts that are given there are just to help them kind of get back on their feet.
And if I, I don't want to belabor it, but we do have the flow chart if you wanted to have it or we could always bring it back next week if we're going to do that. But Chris, could you put up the flow chart real quick?
So while we're waiting on that, Jackie, gaining a consensus of this select board, I will suggest that we probably return to this item as early as next week, so long as it gives you folks a chance to answer any questions Mr. Sparrow might have.
I'll reach out to you directly, Jackie, with some, with some specific questions I have. And we can have a conversation about it. And I don't mind having like a phone conversation or whatever will work for you to talk about them. So I appreciate all the effort that you put into it. I think it's a, you know, it's a valiant effort and I definitely believe that, you know, these kinds of things are important to do. I just, I have some concerns about some of the mechanisms in place. So we can just, we can chat about it.
Jackie, and furthermore, if you could address my point about devising a process by which you folks would, you know, approve to move certain applicants to us under some guise of confidentiality for official approval for being compensated under the fund. I'd like to see something that describes that step, if you could.
Okay.
Did you want to have Jackie describe the flow chart and let it's up on the screen?
Sure.
Do you want to?
Yeah, just over what I was just saying in terms of, you know, who is eligible for this, for this program? Do they have a financial hardship and can we demonstrate a financial hardship through their, through their application? So it's a pre-程序, and if they do not have a financial hardship, then they are not eligible for these COVID funds. If they do have a financial hardship and I'm asking questions related to if they're already receiving any federal assistance, if they are on a Section 8 or they do have a voucher already in hand, they do not qualify for these programs because again, we're trying to fill a need where there's individuals out there that are experiencing a real hardship due to loss of a job or maybe their hours have been reduced or, you know, there's individuals in the community that have had to stop working because they're taking care of, taking care of aging parents. So we're really trying to get at, you know, a need in the community for those who would not necessarily qualify for those funds. And so if they meet that eligibility and we can demonstrate a hardship, then they would be eligible for rent and mortgage relief through this fund. And this is something we've been doing even before COVID. So with the Community Action Fund, members of the community come forward all the time with needs, sometimes mortgage needs. And we have fulfilled monthly mortgages for certain individuals in the community. And so it's something we've been doing. This just is an additional program and something that would be more specific to, you know, somebody who's leasing or has a mortgage that they're trying to pay for. So it's something we've been doing and I'm, you know, taking all your questions down and I'm happy to come back to you next week with hopefully, you know, positive outcomes on this program.
Any other final comments, Ben, Tina?
Just one last question, John, on the circle background one more time. Are you, do you think, all right, are you looking for information to come by vote from the Youth Advisory Board that has amounts and numbers? Or are, just to get, hopefully to give Jackie a little guidance as she prepares for next week. Are you looking for information that is more on a sort of a sliding scale of need? Like how?
No, just simply that on, there's an assessment of cases on a given week and we've identified some numbering schemes so as to keep confidentiality in place. The following applications were received, the following applications were acted upon and here's the amount that's being dispersed for this applicant.
Okay.
And there's a vote behind, excuse me, or behind each of the actions.
Okay.
That the board that Jackie works with confirms with and they send it along to Mike. He brings it to us.
Got it.
But there's no payment approved until we do it. That's the whole point.
Okay, well then forgive me because I was thinking that you were saying something a little bit more detailed than that, which was to.
No, it's really tracking and making the approval point here rather than Youth and Family Services.
Okay.
That's all it was.
Thank you.
All right. Chief, anything else to report to us tonight on COVID?
Just the one other thing. COVID, of course, is going to spill very quickly into the upcoming flu season and there are flu vaccination requirements for school-aged children. And the Board of Health will be discussing in detail tomorrow night their upcoming flu clinics. And so once we have more details from that, we'll be coming back to the board. I know they've already been in touch with the facilities manager to discuss what the flow would look like at a flu clinic because this is a very different operating environment than we've had in previous years. So it'll be very similar to in-person voting. There will be signage required, there will be distancing required, there will be one-way directional flow through the facility. So we'll have more details as those get fleshed out.
Real quickly, on September 1st, we have a primary coming in.
Yes.
I presume you're working with schools to ensure that the voting environment will be sterile as though it was back in May. So we're going to take the same precautions with voters, social distancing, numbers of people and so forth, right?
We perfected a great model for our previous in-person voting experience.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Any questions for me?
No, chief.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, so much. Appreciate you coming by. Thank you for Scott Moles being there in case there were questions on the flu clinic.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie. Warrants. Will the clerk kindly read them?
Looks like we have one warrant.
I'm so sorry.
Oops.
Tuck it back under.
We have one warrant for, so I'll make a motion to approve the warrant for $656,590.05, of which $190,484.43 is town payroll.
Second up?
Thank you very much. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries. All right, moving on to public comment. Mr. Sparrow?
Do you want me to bring up, oh, Woodland Street's already on the agenda later, so we can talk about that later. So I just wanted to follow up on, a little briefly on the water main break the other day. I was certainly affected by it myself. I live on Highland Street and I lost water for most of, most of that day. So, but one of the things that happened was is we did get a blackboard notification. I got a nice text on my phone that said, water main break, be out for a few hours, be advised. So I was able to be aware of that and the chief kind of pointed out that there were some challenges some folks had with updating their information on blackboard. So I just wanted to make it clear, give the chief the opportunity to sort of walk somebody through if they wanted to update their information or sign up for blackboard notifications and emergencies or something like that, if you could just briefly do that.
Thank you, with the permission of the chair, of course.
Please.
Yes, so if someone already has a profile in Blackboard, they could log in if they remember their login information and update a new email address or a new phone number if they've changed from a landline to now they're only a wireless-based, if they've changed carriers and they have a new phone number, if they've moved to another location or if they've moved out of town. In the last week, we've gotten quite a few people who've reached out and said, hey, I haven't lived in town for a couple of years, sorry about, to hear about your water problem, but please take us off the list. So I've been going in and manually removing those, but if someone doesn't know and doesn't remember their, their profile name, they can just reach out to me directly and I can update their profile. But this incident did serve as a good reminder that everyone needs to make sure to keep their contact info up to date, all of the different platforms, both their phone, their text messaging, as well as their email profiles, because we still got a lot of stuff that's kicked back as undeliverable.
And you can access the Blackboard Connect. It's right on the town website.
It's on the.
It's on the right-hand side.
Town website, it's on the police department website, it's on the fire department website. We can, we can absolutely get you there if you're having a problem navigating. And we have offered that especially for some of our older adults who may not have access to the internet or may not be as comfortable entering their information through the portal. I'll be happy to take any information. The Select Board's office is great. When they get a phone call from a concerned resident, they take down the information, they email it to me and within a few minutes of receiving the email, I've usually already made the change.
Wonderful.
But thank you for the reminder to keep your information current.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I have for public comment.
Thank you. Tina?
Just, I wanted to thank the highway department for the work that they had done cutting back the brush along Woodland Street for the start of school. I noticed it today, coming back from vacation and it looks great. And again, thank you for doing that work. I know we're two weeks delayed on the start of school, but it's great to see that's on the schedule and getting done for the end of August. So thank you again.
Thank you. Tina, my remarks are along the same line as Ben's. I was going to congratulate and thank our water department for the work they did last Friday. Very briefly, I'll read the message from our DPW director. Water service was restored at approximately 8:00 PM Friday to customers impacted by the main break at 1084 Washington Street. The break was not a result of infrastructure failure, but a utility contractor who was setting a new pole and drilled down directly through the top of a 12-inch transite water main. I believe Sean indicated that pipe is over 50 years old. The vendor will be working with the Department of Public Works and Travis's office to rectify the responsibility and ultimately any costs that were incurred associated with that break. It was a substantial water main break though. This was a major, major repair and it did take quite some time. Sorry about the inconvenience to the Sparrow family.
But my thanks to the water department.
Sorry about the inconvenience to the Sparrow family, but my thanks to the Water Department for their work securing that emergency last Friday. All right, having no other public comments, we will now move on to comments from the Town Administrator, Travis.
I have quite a few. Would you like me to go out of order after Grant and Blair Square, or would you like me to push through?
Why don't you push through? We'll stick with the agenda for now.
Well, we've covered one, which was the water main break, so take that off. So the early voting, I would just mention, as I did last week, up on the website, you can find the early voting schedule, which is the Town Hall schedule. So today was 8:30 to 4:30, as is Wednesday and Thursday. Tomorrow, Tuesday, is the longest day, 8:30 to 7:00. And Friday will be 8:30 to 1:00. Just a reminder from last week, early voting is in Upper Town Hall. We ask that you access that through the front of the building, the ADA Compliance Building, as the first floor is somewhat closed, but you can absolutely access it through the front and go directly up. And there is a greeter in the front of the building to help you do that. One other thing, we had Beth Greenblatt here two weeks ago on the solar project, just letting people know that a video explaining this solar project, which includes interviews by the three people at this table, will be going up on the website. It is a seven-minute video, so Chris is haggling with that and where to put it and how to make it a prime real estate. But that will explain the project and the benefits to the town, and I believe there will be more to come after that. That is an initial video. On the DPW, you all just mentioned the water main break, which I appreciate the kind words on the response from the town. And as was mentioned, we will be talking to the vendor. I would say that this is a vendor who normally does the right thing and informs us when they're cutting into the street, and they did not do that this time. So there will certainly be follow-up with those individuals. Also-
May I jump in?
Please, go ahead.
With a comment. Given that you'll be following up with the vendor on this one, I just wanted to follow through with a request-
Good.
-to contact the Highway Director, Tom Smith, to see if there are other action items that we are looking for from this vendor. So it's my understanding that there's some surface roadwork along Exchange that requires some utility poles to be moved out of the way, and where we probably have a captive audience right now with this vendor. This may be a good time to check on the status of our request. Tom Smith can confirm all of that with you, but that's a comment he left with me a while ago. I believe it's something that's holding up some work.
Understood.
Thank you.
Very good. One other thing, two other things from the DPW. Good news here. So Summer and Washington has been an interesting intersection when it comes to visibility and a couple of other issues. MassDOT has engaged the town on that intersection and is planning to repaint the intersection with new markings, including the word "stop" within the bar or as part of the stop bar. And then after they do that, the town will move the "stop ahead" sign to within 100 feet of the new stop bar. MassDOT has also cut back hedges along the approach to the intersection to increase visibility, which has been a complaint from residents. And then finally, after all that is done, the town will install a flashing stop sign on Summer Street, and that is probably, the best comp would be one that was similarly put in on Norfolk Street. So that's a project that we'd had some resident complaints on and one that we required MassDOT's help with, and they have come to, well, that is still in process, but they've started the work with working with us on that.
One quick interruption, I'm sorry again. Given all that good news, has that resident or the residents who've contacted your office or any one of us been notified about these changes?
My understanding is that email on the work that's being done was sent to that individual.
Sean emailed her.
Great, fantastic. Thank you.
And then one other good piece of news on the DPW is the Tech Assist money for the Complete Streets project, which is a prioritization for the Complete Streets project. That grant has been approved and authorized. That'll be $37,915. That is a reimbursable grant, which means that we get bills from Tech Assist, we pay them, and then we go for reimbursement from MassDOT, which runs that program. So that has been approved and is ready to go. More to come as we progress. Next up, overlay. So the Board of Assessors, last, I want to say Tuesday, could have been Wednesday, I apologize, voted to release $484,000 from the overlay reserve account. This happens with relative infrequency, but every once in a while, the Board of Assessors needs to look at their caseload at the ATB, any outstanding potential abatements, and unpaid property taxes through the Treasury Collector's Office, and determine where the balance of the overlay reserve should be. And they determine that $484,000 could be released. That's good news for our finances for the year. Essentially, if nothing were to happen, that money would float to free cash at the end of the year. But if we were to have a special town meeting before the annual town meeting, we would have the ability to also appropriate those funds. We could replenish the stabilization fund, for example, or, you know, any other sort of mechanism that would require appropriation. Those funds are now available, they're in overlay surplus, and we thank the Board of Assessors for their hard work doing that calculation. And then finally, on that note, as it comes to town meeting, we are currently under the assumption that we will be going ahead with an October 26 town meeting, which means that next week I will most likely be coming back to you for a vote to open the warrant. We will also be potentially bringing you the idea of lowering the quorum, if that makes sense to the Board at that time, although that will be a little bit early in the process. We do have more time, but we would want to just consider that all in the conversation, and we will need to discuss location. We have got some interest from groups on when the warrant will be opened, because they'd like to have some things in front of this Board to put on the warrant. So I think, you know, announcing that next week should get quite a bit of interest. And that would be my plan at this time.
Regarding the overlay surplus, will you be making a recommendation on what to do with that funds in writing to this Board? And when will that be?
Well, again, that could be sort of once the warrant's open. I can do it as requested at any point. There are multiple options, and we could probably prioritize the best way to go about that.
Right.
But we would want to consider that in the warrant, so once that's open, it would be a natural time to do it.
Yeah, I look forward to that. And the, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank. The second item, the last item you just referred to?
The annual town meeting-
Yes, regarding the annual town meeting, or special town meeting, do you folks want to have a chat about parameters around the scheduling of that meeting at this time? Or do you want to put it off and wait to see how things develop? Just putting it out there as a question.
I think we should start having some preliminary questions now. Let's get the things out there that we need to have answered and ideas, so that way we're thinking about them early in the process instead of scrambling when we're up against a time limit.
Okay. What concerns or what standards would you be looking to address regarding scheduling the special town meeting?
I would like to sort of, I mean, certainly the logistics that Travis brought up, you know, certainly like, you know, quorum and things like that. I know, you know, that it's fluid, how many people we can have in a space, what space would we be able to use if the schools are open, how does that work? And then additionally, I'd like to sort of understand, like, if we have any other criteria or things that we're looking for, like, for example, you know, a budget from the state before we engage in having a town meeting, we have something to talk about, in fact. So those would be my, sort of, the logistics, the physical logistics, and if there's any other parameters that we need to be considering before we can move forward.
Great. Tina, any thoughts on that special town meeting scheduling at this time?
Well, two things. One is Chief Cassidy's been updating us about going back in time, looking at people who attended town meeting, and have any of those people come up as, or have any address matches come up to say that they attended town meeting, they are identified as positive? And I think it's all good news across the board on that front. So I think we do have strong precedent that our emergency management team and all those from the Clerk's Office and so on who plan town meetings do a fantastic job, and my trust and confidence there is quite high. So I put that out there on the table. The quorum issue is a big one for me. I would definitely want to understand that fully and have a nice, long runway to make any decision on that one. The financial information, I'm not too concerned about at this point in time, you know, having adequate, accurate, good information to act on, that's not a big concern of mine at this point in time. What does come to mind, though, are all of the things that were sort of put off back when we were going through the first round of, well, the second round, the 1/12 budget and so on, getting ready for annual town meeting. Two things right off the bat come to mind. The Traffic Advisory Committee was going to put forward a request for equipment. That was delayed until a special town meeting to see how things settled out from this pandemic. And the other one was the Youth and Family Services grant writer, rather, to help with a drug-free community grant. So there, and there were many others that were out there that, based on our comments and also the Finance Committee, were sort of said, "Let's put this on hold until..." And so any delay in fall town meeting further delays those types of decisions, and that may be okay, but that'll be on my mind in terms of what to consider, when, or things that we should be considering when we look at the date.
Got it.
Is that enough information? Because October 26 seems very far away and seems like a solid-
Seems very close to me.
It seems like it's coming up fast.
You have three kids who are trying to get back off to college and school. That seems very far away. So it seems comfortable right now to say that's doable, but that's my feeling right now.
Sure. No, I think I tend to agree with both of you. I think we need to watch this. I think citizens should be prepared for town meeting to move again if some of the circumstances that Ben brought up and Tina brought up come to fruition, or any combination of them. I think the public health issue is the number one. If things develop poorly in the town of Holliston, that will impact it. I am mindful of the Legislature's budget for FY '21 when it emerges. We've been hearing October, so the timing might not be great as we sit here tonight. I think one of the things I'd like you to follow up on also, Travis, is the proximity of the state primary on September 1st, followed by the national, excuse me, town meeting on the 26th, and then the national election on the 3rd, I think it is, right? That's a lot of action in a short amount of time for a Clerk's Office, which is probably quite busy already getting ready with mail-in voting. And if you would reach out to her to get her opinion on the timing of town meeting, if she sees some relief coming one way or another, or if it doesn't matter, I'd like her feedback. It's a municipal action that affects pretty much the same crowd, so we'd like to see some impact. I did watch the back end of the Finance Committee meeting last week, and I did observe some of their feedback, that they wouldn't mind a delay in town meeting. If I heard Ken correctly, they see some benefit to that. But on the other hand, I think they'll just roll with what we do. So folks at home should know it's a topic that we'll probably tackle over the next several weeks, and based on what we did in the spring, it could very well be a week-to-week decision. So we'll be mindful of that.
Great.
I know it, right?
So what I would bring is-
It has to be.
Opening and closing dates for the warrant, right? But then if it were to get pushed, we would close it, and then we could just reopen the warrant again, potentially? So, you know, we can roll with the punches.
Sure, okay. Sorry for that off-ramp, but I think it was worthwhile getting our opinions out there, because this is a looming issue, and we'll likely have to deal with it coming down the road. What else, Travis?
That's everything I got.
All right, we're going to move on to the grant of the trail easement. Is that you, Mr. Hearn?
I can start it. We have Karen Sherman with us. I would say the action item that we need tonight is the actual signing of the easement, but the project that it relates to and the Upper Charles Trail behind Casey's is what Karen Sherman is here to update us on.
Well, we have two different items. Hi, Karen, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good. Why don't we deal with the easement first?
Okay.
And then we'll introduce the Blair Square Committee, because I'm going to have to read an open meeting law declaration for that group to assemble.
Actually, there's two, those are two separate items, you're correct. Karen is going to update on the project that's related to the easement, and we can discuss the signing of it. And then the Blair Square Committee will also, I mean, could share their opinions, but also has its own separate item, because I think they want to talk larger Blair Square.
Got it. Karen, you're first.
Good evening. So Karen Sherman, Town Planner. I sort of drew the short straw. You'll notice that the memo that I sent to you is from the Highway Superintendent and the DPW Director as well. I guess I get to get the faves at the moment. So just a quick update, so several weeks ago, you accepted a gift for this grant. So all the pieces have been coming together. So again, that gift, and thank you for accepting that, is to be put towards the flashing signal. We installed-
Karen, you've cut out. Can't hear you.
Uh-oh.
Karen, did you hit mute by chance?
No, it's not muted.
We cannot hear you.
Nope.
Oh, you're coming back in now.
Sorry about that.
Okay, go ahead.
That's better.
Is that good?
Yes, Ben.
What I put together, what we put together for you, and Tom Smith needs to be commended for moving the earth to try to coordinate all these vendors and contractors. Essentially, we've established a work program beginning August 31st to start the project, Phase 1, that is. So the identified items in Phase 1 would be to grind the existing pavement and prep the area, and to install the drainage and the base course of pavement. And that should all occur within the month of September. Oh, nice graphic. Chris, thank you. So what you're looking at, the parking lot again, has been designed for 21 spaces located between Central Street, so Central would be on your left-hand side, Church Street on your right-hand side. It's approximately 400 feet long. So across railroad streets is Copy Haven. So currently, you know, that car is sort of double or triple stacked. Cut through. This was, and people are driving on the trail now. So the issue would be to establish the barriers with a one-way flow and formalize the parking. Just to remind you, the easement is within two sections that are 7.7 feet wide in both sections. That's to just move the trail a bit, as the Casey's Crossing building is sort of in the line of the trail, so that a proper width could be achieved in the parking lot, again, for one-way traffic. So going from Central to Church Street. So I think I outlined in the memo what's being proposed. So the first week would be staged and set up the area, a day or two of grinding the pavement and completing the grading, that is, the rough grading, stop piling the material for use in the trail construction later. And then the week of September 14th to install the drainage, and the week of September 21st to put in the base course of pavement, potentially the signal, the signage, and potentially the trail as well. Phase 2, probably April, we're guessing, when the pavement companies reopen, and that the pavement would have, the base course of pavement would have overwintered, can be usable during that period of time. Not sure what else.
Karen, a couple of questions for you on the timing. It appears as though this is a well-thought-out timeline. It does involve the redirection of the trail users onto Railroad Street. Did I read that correctly?
Yes, so the use of the railroad street sidewalk with the installation of a crosswalk across railroad to the grass strip, to the crosswalk on Church Street to join the trail. So it's sort of a little zag, if you would.
Was Holliston Police consulted on that by any chance?
I'm not sure, but the alternate route would be to continue straight down Woodland on the existing sidewalk and to cross at the new signal further down on Woodland.
Okay.
So there are two options for getting on the trail from there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Can I follow up with one question? So Karen, do I understand you-
Go ahead.
Do I understand you correctly, then, that on the week of August 31st, that the install crosswalk on Railroad Street, that's a temporary change?
Actually, that's a permanent change.
Do you have an image? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That was on the plan, as well as relocation of the crosswalk on Central Street, but that one actually got redone already. This plan was actually drawn before the signal was put on on- This plan was actually drawn before the signal was put on on Central Street as well. So if you'll notice on the bottom of your screen on the left, the driveway there at the adjoining property has also been relocated, and the crosswalk that was previously on Central Street has already been removed and relocated.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it's possible to see the crosswalk that you're referring to on Railroad?
So straight beyond the word "street" from the middle of the screen down, there is an existing sidewalk on Railroad on the upper part of the screen, sorry. You would cross over, and there is a grass strip from the curve line. So if you come straight across from the letter "church."
Yeah.
To where it's the crosswalk, there is a grass strip that is walkable there.
Yeah.
It's not optimal, but it's what's there immediately. You could also, again, cross Church Street on the north side and follow on the existing sidewalk and further down.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is the opportunity to point this out, but I'm going to go ahead and take it anyway, Karen, so forgive me if it's not the best time to say this, but if you do move that.
That's where you're going.
If you do move that crosswalk to the opposite side of Church Street, so that it's on the east side of Church Street, you now connect an existing sidewalk, an existing sidewalk that is coming down, or up rather, Church Street heading to downtown. So if you're a child walking to school, you're coming down Church Street on the east side, the right side, and you have, if we were to move that crosswalk, you now have a crosswalk that gets you to the crossing guard and the sidewalk that takes you to school. Where it is now, that would be less than ideal in that the child would have to take the left turn on the proposed crosswalk for the trail, and then take the grassy strip, get to the crosswalk, and then cross again with the crossing guard to head on their way. So perfect does not need to be the enemy of good here. I just wanted to land that comment. Maybe it sticks, maybe it doesn't, but if we're looking.
Can we have two?
So I'm not going to, at this point, I think to insert ourselves into the hard work that's been done by Tom Smith and Karen and Sean to identify all of these elements is challenging. I don't think two is possible. And Karen, please help me here. Is it that the land on the right side of Church Street there, in front of what is currently Depot Liquor Store, is that an issue? Is that why the crosswalk was placed on the left side of Church Street?
The right-of-way as it intersects the street. So there actually is within, if you go to the left of the word "church."
Yep.
I'm sorry, to the right of the word "church," right? See, the angle there of that intersection is very difficult to get around, and there's actually a physical barrier there. The width that is between the existing edge of pavement and the property line is really not sufficient to do that. It's not that it's not impossible, but see how the road line, you see the pavement line right at the crosswalk. The pavement line comes into that intersection at an angle. It's not centered within the right-of-way.
Okay.
So either mean relocating the entire roadway width, or changing the shape of the intersection because it's not, it is a 90. It's not a 90 on paper.
Understood. Yeah, so I mean, in full disclosure, I brought this up a couple of different times to a couple of different people. I think we may be at the limits of what's possible here. I'm happy to see the crosswalk, a crosswalk, so I think that's great. Would I prefer it on the right side of Church Street? Yes, for all the reasons I stated, but I think, again, for having broached this subject a couple of times, we may be at the limit of what decision we can make. So thank you for explaining all that, Karen.
Karen, the project in terms of phases appears to conclude on, for Phase One, somewhere around the tail end of September. Is there a reason why we're not proceeding with any other work, including the granite curbing as weather permits into the fall?
The only granite curbing that's involved in the project is at the rounding, so where the parking lot and trail meet the existing roadways. The internal curbing is cored at the same time as the top course of pavement. The paving machine actually produces the berm in one flow, if you would. It's an attachment that goes on the paving machine.
Right. But my question is, is there any reason why we stop on September 21st for Phase One and have to wait until the spring to get to Phase Two?
Tom would like the pavement to overwinter in terms of settling and usage, rather than to put a top course right over the top of what's there.
Okay.
So it's like a sandwich. It's built like a sandwich. The pavement, the base course of pavement is a little thicker. It gets topped generally, at least in roadbuildings, it gets topped generally overwinter, after it's had a freezing and thawing.
Okay.
Or curing period.
Ben?
So thank you, Karen, for presenting this. I know you're put sort of in a position because Tom Smith put this together, and you're presenting his work. So thank you for the recap. But my question is, so as I understand this particular project, it's related to the $92,000 grant, Blair Square Improvements, the grant that we got? Is that kind of what it is?
Yes. This is a recreational trails program grant.
DCR.
Specifically for this, if you would, 400 feet.
Okay. So the expectation is that this is being paid for via grant, correct?
This project has a minimum 25% in-kind match.
Okay.
And so the match is achieved in a bunch of different ways.
Right.
Including our time and materials.
Sure.
And volunteers, you know, commending the folks of the Blair Square Committee for gently coercing GLM engineering into volunteering their time. It's a substantial effort for surveying and design engineering on their part.
Sure.
It's close to $14,000 in value.
Wow. No, I guess where I'm leading with that is I just wanted to see if there's potential for somebody coming in front of this board asking for, do we have enough money to pay for it, is what I'm basically making sure.
Honestly, I don't know the answer to that yet. I believe that we do.
Okay.
I believe there may be extras that could be added, and/or other in-kind folks that would be willing to contribute.
Okay.
Like the Friends of the Trails, or even local vendors.
Okay.
It's a tight budget at 92, though, I would say, for the dollars that are being spent. Overages, I think, are a lot of the work that's being done by staff and volunteers.
Is there a budget for this project? Have you seen it?
$125,816 is what we budgeted. We budgeted both staff time and volunteer time, materials, actual materials that we have, as well as purchased materials, as well as purchased contractors.
Okay.
I think we're pretty close. We did a little bit of overestimating on the amount of pavement, and the price increase seems to be okay on those items so far. So the reclamation and the pavement seem to be right on the original budget.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that we're getting ahead of it, so we're not missing something because we didn't get, we didn't get, making it up, you know, a few thousand dollars to make sure that we finish the project, because we want to make sure this is a, you know, I think it's an important asset in the town, and it's a, you know, it's a space that could really use a little sprucing up. And I think it's important that we complete the project, but I just want to make sure that we have, you know, that we have the resources we require to complete it. So that's all I have.
Just a quick, for instance, I'm sorry, to walk over you.
Sure.
Just a quick, for instance, is that the donated signal or the money for the signal that you accepted as a gift, those were included in the grant as a cost in the grant, so that can be offset by any overages on the other line item.
Great. Good news. Okay.
Karen, back in June, I think it was, the prior board had received Mr. Conley, I think, to talk a little bit about this concept, and there was some discussions about materials, fencing, and so forth. Have any of those changes been incorporated into this new design? Are you privy to that?
What you see here, the sections of what were post-enrail fence have been converted to guard rail based on safety recommendations by both Tom and the design engineers, and especially the fencing guard rail engineer at DCR. So we are working on the details of that installation and how those need to be spaced. Because there is no vertical curbing, the barrier to the trail, if you would, needs to be substantial, because a car can drive right over that Kipkod berm. The cost of installing vertical curve is prohibitive, but some sort of structural guard rail, if you would, needs to be utilized.
And with regard to other fencing, were there any considerations for those recommendations by the board back in June?
I believe the other recommendation was the chain link fence on the southeast side, so up against where there is current sort of overgrowth and a partial chain link fence on the Askin property. That's proposed for a chain length of screening.
Who owns the current fence on the property?
They do, the Askin family.
How far from that fence line in will our fence go? Do you happen to know?
It's two to three feet, sort of mid, if you would, the property line is the lighter of those lines, and the dark line linked to the proposed chain link fence. And then the line just below that, the sort of dashed line with the little dots on it, is the existing chain length. So it's like two to three feet off the line. It's variable.
And you mentioned guard rails, Karen, will be going along. Is that the, between the parking lot and the trail, or the Casey's?
Parking lot and the trail. So it'd be both Casey's parking lot and this parking lot.
They're going to be steel safety rails? Is that what it is?
What we expect is eight-by-eight wooden posts with wood rails, very commonly used by DCR in their parking lots. I drove by one this afternoon on the Blackstone Valley bike way. They're very, very stout posts.
We had talked back in June about making granite posts to mimic the look of what the Congregational Church has downtown. There was some aesthetic interest at that time.
From that, by the structural engineering folks, you know, the thought would be that unless you have a substantial granite post, that they may very well be movable. But that is definitely something that we're talking about. I did see the memo that you shared with Travis, and I will run that up the flagpole with the DCR engineering folks and see if they can get a vendor. And if it is a cost issue, we'll bring it to you as soon as we can.
Yeah, actually, this is more to you, Travis. I would like to see a budget on this project. It's been a while, I think, since we sent in the application.
Yep.
I'm sure things have changed since then, so I think we should, if you could share it with the board, that would be great. Any other questions for Karen on the Casey's Crossing project?
None. Thank you.
All right. I want to entertain a motion at this point, because I believe you'll need a motion to approve the trail easement.
Yes, so I would just point out one thing. I'm working with Mr. Marsden, who is getting one final signature, so you could take a motion that you'll be signing with the understanding that Mr. Marsden will be delivering on the replacement for the Milford National Bank. I did speak with him today, and I would just put that in the motion.
All right. I'll accept the motion to approve the trail easement at Casey's Crossing as presented, with the condition that the additional Milford National Bank signatory still has to occur. Have a second on that? Do you want to make the motion?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. And a second?
A second?
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie, so you have your vote on the grant, trail easement. Karen, any other thoughts for us before we move on to the next item? On the grant, excuse me, on the trail? At that point, you good?
She indicated.
Okay. Great. Let's move on to the Blair Square Committee.
Thank you, Karen.
Mr. Conley, if you'd be so kind to join us. Do we have a quorum?
Yes.
Thank you. If you would join us, I'm just going to read this, Kevin, while you come into position, if it's okay.
I'll show up with a wire.
So this evening, for those assembled, we have a joint meeting with the Blair Square Committee, who, as indicated, have achieved a quorum on our virtual Zoom call this evening. So pursuant to the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated March 16, 2020, this Blair Square Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the town's website within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. Thank you. Kevin, good evening.
Hi, Kevin Conley, 44 Cranberry Lane, Blair Square Committee. Thank you for having us tonight. The idea is to give you an update of what's going on, because a lot has gone into this. A lot of work has gone into this, a lot of planning, thought process. I believe everyone got a copy of this plan?
Yes.
I was given this yesterday, so it's a gift to the town, if you'd like it. The Blair Square side, it's interesting what's going on, is to give you an idea, as you walk in from the Casey's side to Blair Square side, the trail is going to swing right up by CVS and back down again, to leave an open space in the middle. That open space is designed to be like the Town Common or the Town Green, someplace where people can assemble, perhaps do some programming there for the Parks and Rec Department, perhaps have some functions there on the weekends, music, movies, other things, possibilities to leave it open for that. And we've had some help with this by some, it was Inga Daniels and Reagan Harrell have helped out drawing plans, and this is the plan that they have come up with. And as you walk into the trail, the right-hand side is going to be the veterans portion. That was discussed a long time ago, I believe, now.
Could you point that out on the map?
Right here.
Thank you.
Immediate to the right. And then the rest of the area is like a stamped brick or something to that effect. As you go further down, there's going to be a structure, like a pavilion. Right now, there's that gazebo down there. If you had a chance to see the gazebo, it's not used frequently. If one person goes in there, no one else goes in there, even before pre-COVID, it didn't happen. And it has a tendency to collect weeds, dust, dirt, leaves. There's mold inside, so it's maintenance-heavy and it's small. So we want to replace that with a structure that could perhaps have music talent underneath for some sort of a talent night or a show night for the town. A large area to meet in the middle, so people can hang out. And the idea is to have some seating opposite, up towards the CVS side and below the rail trail, some, almost like terrace-type thing. It's not a final plan yet. This is just the preliminary stuff, so people can look across. Again, none of this is set in stone yet. These are the ideas that are going through. So you'd be sitting here looking across, some want to change the structure here so you can look this way, but trying to get a lot of useful area. I grew up in Lexington, and Lexington Green is a very nice area for the town. It's a place people go to. This is a nice place people go to now. We want to make it nicer, more friendly for more people to visit the area and help the businesses out in the area as well.
That pavilion, Kevin, if I read it correctly, it's covered?
You're on a roof. You want a roof. So people can get under the sun, get under the rain, get under the snow. And I would like four to eight picnic tables under there, depending upon social distancing.
In terms of size, is there a scale that is envisioned by this concept?
Well, this one here is 32 by 24.
Okay. Is that about the size of the one that's done, it started?
When it started is a square. I don't know the exact size, but it's around there.
Seems a little bigger then?
Now, I'm looking for more of a rectangular one myself. Something that would look more like Casey's building because it's a railroad structure, but so far I don't think I'm on the majority of the board of that. But I like something like that that looks like a railroad type of structure.
Sorry, Mr. Conley, can I just interject? I had put the image of this in your board packet from Friday, then Mr. Conley had emailed me a few emails Friday afternoon, which I sent out as a separate email, and included in that email is a few of the images that I think the Blair Square Committee has been looking at, including a couple renderings and some other ones in communities.
Thank you Travis.
Yeah, and then also I took a ride down to Choate Park last weekend midway and it's drop dead gorgeous what they did with their park. I think they spent $2.3 million on it according to one of the selection.
I believe it was CPC money too.
Phew, but it's gorgeous. It's a much larger area, much, much larger. But a meeting area for people to go down to help with the local areas, help with the local businesses in the area. And speaking of that, bathrooms, bathrooms have been discussed down there. And we were thinking originally, do you put up a caboose and some bathrooms? Do you put in some blue porta potties? But something has come up recently with a new local business in the area who's looking to improve his bathrooms and needs a leaching field. And we have space, so this is within the last week, two weeks. So somehow he would offer the town the use of his bathrooms and we gave him use of some land for a leaching field. It might be covered. We have put Peter Barberig in charge of that because there'd be some legal ramifications involved. But if that works, that could solve space problems, bathroom problems, so that's being looked into. It's a possibility of a farmer's market going down there. I understand there's some money available. We have taken one of our members who's in charge of that to look more into the farmer's market, what the money is available, what are the contingencies with accepting the money, what has to be done? And I don't know if it's a Saturday thing for two hours, three hours, spring, summer, fall, I don't know, but looking into that for a farmer's market. Grading will be an issue as you come in. Talking to Robert Widnick, you don't want more than a 4% grade on the trail. And if I want to understand, this will not be with, this will be within the 4% grade of the trail, the trail swinging around. Oh, the stamped bricks discussed, as in Choate Park, as in front of Town Hall, people get their names on the brick for like a hundred bucks, a large brick maybe 250, 500, so the opportunity to get your name on a brick would be possible and help fund the operation. We're looking at that, grading 4%. The building is a big discussion because this will live on long after, hopefully, we're not here anymore and we want to do it right the first time. Do you want to overdo it, underdo it? It's a tricky discussion. We all have our thoughts on what we want to do with that building. I talked to Sean Reese last week on it and he said the project for him would be too big. They could cut the grass, when the grass was there, they could maintain it, but to build the project would be beyond his capability. And I also discussed trash barrels with them, knowing that trash barrels can be controversial versus carry and carry up. And if you see the dog waste containers there now, people throwing the trash in the dog waste containers and by Sunday night it's all over the place. So we're going to put new signs on the dog waste, that it's dog waste only, not for any other material. And Sean said that if there were trash barrels up there, they could maintain them, but as long as there's no dog waste in the trash. So there'd have to be a delineation of what exactly is receptacle is good for what. And then bricks. And what we're now, we're at this plan here, to go to the next step is get the more detailed plans. And Inger has told me that the plans would roughly be about $5,000, I believe, for the next step of plans, which would include community involvement, getting feedback, I think she said two meetings with the community fire, this type of information I suppose now, which will be interesting. And we wanted to bring you up to date of what this was going on. And it's all going to come down to, so the next step would be $5,000, which is what we need, once we decide we want to go with that direction. And then I'm going to need some help with construction documents. If this were to be approved, what would construction documents cost? I don't know that. Perhaps Karen would know that or someone could find out, is it 30,000, 35,000? I don't know. But construction documents, to put it into specifics. And then construction documents might go into what's it going to cost to build it, which is the ultimate question. And before we go into the construction documents, we have to be sure the plan is what we want. But we also want an idea of the final cost before we ask for construction documents. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So now we have to finalize our plan. This is more or less, everyone likes this. I'm not an expert on aesthetics, just ask my wife. But it has a central meeting area, people can hang out, hardcore, hard surface, it's all handicap accessible, the structure we put in will be handicap accessible. We want basically all open sides. And my goal is four poles and a roof, so the wind can blow through it. It's easy to sweep out, easy to clean out. You don't want a place that birds are going to, are going to hang out in the roof. And everybody did a great job, there are no birds up in their roofs hanging around. They can make it simple like that to alleviate the birds. So the project basically is going to go down to here, if you know where that crossroad is now. It's basically going to go down roughly to that area there. There'll be some trees added up by the CVS side, a few trees but not many taken down over here. And that's where we're at now. I'd like to get, bring you up to date and get your thought and see if you have any questions about what's going on or where we're heading.
Ben.
So one question I have is we approved an application for a grant to Front Street to do some, to do some work with the Shared Streets Program. And I was just curious what your thoughts or have your committee, what was your thoughts about the, those improvements on Front Street? Is there, you know, do you think they're great?
Awesome.
You like, you like what they're doing there?
Because the talk has been to have some community events where food trucks come in and a one-way street would be, I think it'd be awesome. And the question is, do you pull the food trucks onto the place or do you have them parked up close on a one-way shit and let people go over to the side of the food truck? There's this and that to be discussed, but that's a fabulous idea.
Okay.
Terrific.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is just, you know, even beyond as we get to, you know, thinking about budgets and things like that, is what, what would be plans for financing? Would we be going for CPC funds? Would we be going for private donations and things like that? Like what kinds of, you know, I'm not saying you have an answer per se, it's just I think we have to think about some of those.
Absolutely.
Sort of figuring out like how we're going to, how we're going to get there because we want to make sure that we don't, we have grand ideas, but we can make sure that we can put them into play.
Well, the next step, should decide to do that, is 5,000, it's up to $5,000, which probably means 49,995. And at that point, we'd have to come to you, the FinCon, and say we need up to $5,000. After that, we would go to the CPC, and I did talk to Frank a while back, to kind of give him a warning that we may be looking for some money. And I really want to know what that is going to be because it has to be cost effective and it has to be really good for the town at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't want to be scared of the price is going to be crazy, but I want to make it.
Well, I mean, I love, I think it's a great, you know, it's a great idea to just really start to make that space a little more of a community space and not just sort of a pass-through as people are walking through. I certainly use that part of the trail a lot. And I think it, you know, I can see that there's like a lot of potential in that. So I think it's, I think it's great. I just want to see, you know, what is the, what are the steps that we want to take to see if we can, we can get there. So thank you for doing it.
And one thing, I want to confirm with the, with the chief, that it is emergency accessible right down the middle, should a vehicle ever have to go down the middle. So that, we'll make sure that the police and fire are advised that the trail is going to be accessible and.
We have that UTV that we could use, that certainly probably could go down there.
It's already got some, some trail dust on it.
Okay.
I've seen it.
Tina.
Couple things. So CPC had in the past supported the efforts of the committee with the Casey's parking lot improvements in that if the grant didn't come through, they were going to stand in as backup, if I remember that correctly from a town meeting vote and discussion. So I think CPC, I would be surprised if they were anything other than support about this, so I think that's a great option. For the Shared Streets and Spaces grant, assuming we hear good news on that, I would just ask that when, and it will happen anyway naturally, but where you have the crosswalk?
Over here?
Nope, right here.
Okay.
That may move based on your feedback and feeling of what's piloted with the, with the grant proposal.
Easy.
So that, I just wanted to put that out there. Where is the green space?
All through here.
Okay. I want to share a resident comment that came to me in office hours probably about a year ago, that there does not appear in preliminary plans that were being floated around at that time, any play space for kids. And so the resident was sharing with me that observations from her frequent daily use of Blair Square is that children play there quite a bit on the way to school and on the way home from school. And the request made to me in office hours was please don't lose play space for kids to come in and explore, create and have little adventures. So these are young schoolchildren, right?
I think it'll be increased.
Okay, so I just wanted to share that comment.
But specific, you know, jungle gyms.
No, no. Sort of the natural environment that it is now is conducive to kids coming in there and having total free play.
They can have classes here if they want to.
Well, free play. We're not making here, but anyway, I just wanted to share that comment because it came to me and I think it's an important one. And then the farmer's market, you had said something about funding being available.
I think that was mentioned, but see what we're looking into.
There is some MAPC grant money that's available. I don't think the town at this point, we're going to talk about it under other business. I don't think the town at this point is going to pursue that MAPC funding for a farmer's market. I'm not sure if that was what you were referring to.
It was.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know that that, it looks like there's a diversion away from that. And then the $5,000 that you're talking about, I did read the proposal through from Beals and Thomas, and they talk about one public meeting.
Oh, there's two.
Two meetings, one with the committee, your committee, and then one to prep, and then one to facilitate the actual public meeting. So my question here is, I, and I think we've heard comments from this board in the past, public comment's going to be critical, this is going to be a huge asset for the town. So how do we get changes made with the engineering firm Beals and Thomas and the other one, I'm blanking on the name of the two people, two groups. But anyway, how do we get that feedback? It doesn't look like it's in this proposal. So they're present for the public meeting, there're going to be a lot of comments, there're going to be revisions, I'm certain of it, but all positive. So is that included in this 5,000 or is that going to be an overage that we're looking to seek additional money for? So they take those comments, they make their revisions and they come back with an updated master plan.
So the follow-up of the feedback?
Well.
I'm expecting it, yes.
You expect that's in this proposal?
Yes.
It wasn't clear to me reading through it, so I wanted to ask that question.
I'll verify that.
And so that brings me to the other question, is this master plan, it's called the Blair Square Conceptual Master Plan, what percent complete is it?
This, this is 100%. The next step, which is the plan that goes into this, that's going to show elevations, much more detailed.
Well, 100% I wouldn't think then that public comment would be able to change it.
Well, no, this, this, this here is done.
Yep.
But the final plan from them, including the $5,000, that's a whole other plan. That will show the gradings, much more detailed, much more information on where everything exactly is going to go, 3D views, so you can look at it and turn the angles, things like that.
Okay. I guess my, then I'll come back to my original question, is does the 5,000 for this scope of work and this, with this proposal, does it include revisions that would come after the public comment meeting, the public meeting where?
I believe it does, but I'm going to verify that.
You know Tina, I tend to agree with what you're saying, but I also want to add that I believe the Blair Square Committee's meetings are all public.
Correct.
Have you had any public feedback to Ms. Hines' point from individuals on this rendering?
The ones that have attended generally like it. The big discussion is, is the structure and where it points.
Okay.
I have my ideas, I think everyone has their idea and I want to make sure Robert Widnick's involved, that he likes the way it looks. I even talked to John McCarthy about it, what we're doing. And, you know, he's excited because he sees more customers going to his place of business. I was there last, sad I think I was, and I'm talking to a couple of guys sitting on the bench, they're from Rhode Island, up here on their bikes, much though they quarantined for two weeks, but they were up here for two weeks, for two of them riding their bikes and they do that frequently. And if you've noticed the traffic parked down at Casey's parking lot with the bike racks in the back, it's unbelievable lately. Maybe it's the pandemic that's caused it. They're all over the place and they're coming from all over the place. And it'll be nice to have restaurants for them to go to.
But you're getting, you're getting public feedback in addition to what Tina's calling for, which is more directed design input for consideration on the rendering. Do you have any other questions on this?
I do not.
Okay. Kevin, just a couple of thoughts. This is a ripe CPC project from concept to end. I would recommend if you want to take a vote of your committee, to put forth the request for funding of 5,000 through CPC.
CPC can allocate mine until the fall town meeting?
Special town meeting, correct. Is that too late?
No, they'll just delay it.
Get the work done over the winter and?
Well, now that I heard that Casey's side is going to be next spring, it may not be a bad thing.
Yeah. That way you're, it gives your designer a chance to come together with its public feedback over the winter, come together with a final rendering that you go back to the CPC for in the spring and say, here you go, we've got an approved by the select board rendering, community input, we'd like to get this amount of money for this project authorized at the spring town meeting next year. Then you're off to the races.
Right, because I wouldn't want to start this until this is finished.
Correct. The, you know, my two cents on your pavilion, your structure, I'd seriously.
I'd love your two cents actually.
I would seriously consider putting a solar canopy there to help generate a form of income for the, for the trail, either for maintenance or other upgrades.
I'd agree with you actually.
Some of the, some of the solar canopies can be designed for pretty good sized areas and you said it was 32 by 24, which seems pretty modest. It does achieve, I think, what you were talking about with regard to an open-sided view with a pitch and it does provide cover as well. So consider that, there are grant options for that as well that could be worked into your, your proposal to the CPC.
Well, I was down there with Sean for a quick second. There is electricity to the site.
Yep.
I believe there is water to the site as well.
Yeah, I think he's mentioned that.
And so someone had mentioned putting in a water fountain.
Right.
And a little doggy dish underneath.
I was just going to say, like, speaking of that, it's like, have you, have you reached out to the sustainability coordinator? Has he had any input on, on the plans or any thoughts?
You'll have to put me in contact.
Matt Zetic.
Matt Zetic.
Can you share his contact information with Kevin?
I think that would be, you know, he might have a few thoughts about, especially like thinking just about those like solar panels, he might have some thoughts about some things too.
Chief, I think, yep. Mr., but we have a couple of questions from your committee Kevin, if I could.
Oh, yes.
Turn to virtual. Good evening, Mr. Bob Barry, do you have a question for us?
I do, thank you. A year or so ago, we talked about the issue of septic systems and portable toilets and I think we got a charge to kind of investigate both. We're at the stage now, we're going to investigate that, we really need authorization to do some soils testing to see if in fact that a septic system would be a feasible alternative. So, you know, we've got, got people ready to do the testing, so it won't cost the town anything, but if the town wants to investigate the idea of a septic system, we need authorization to go ahead and do some soil testing.
Travis, do you have any initial thoughts on that?
First I'm hearing of it, I would have to ask a couple of questions, but I mean, the no cost to the town is a good starter, I would say that.
Conversation opener.
Any questions on that?
No, I think, you know, like.
I'm in favor of it, I, we did it with the upper town hall and we see the value of that space for. of that space for the town, and we-
And this would be related to the leach field from the, or is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
It's the testing to do for that. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's to determine if the property-
Yeah.
Can handle.
That the town owns can handle-
Yes.
A, any specific size septic system. Is that right, Peter? Their scaling is-
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'll take a motion to enable the Blair Square Committee to conduct soil testing for the purposes of a septic system on the Blair Square property.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 So there you go, Peter. There's your vote to move forward with that free testing. And if you could share the, share the results with us, that would be great. Did you have something else to add?
I needed more work.
Yeah, I know. Did you have something else to add?
No.
How many Holliston Lion softball trophies are on that shelf behind you?
I think there might be one. Some of them are golf, or most of them are-
What division?
My father, my father's memory of the area.
Thanks for coming in tonight, Peter. Who's next? Mike, did you say? Reagan Harold. Did you want to make some comments to the group tonight?
Reagan Harold here from Beals and Smith.
Hi, Reagan.
I just wanted to, how are you? I just wanted to follow up on the question about the scope of the proposal and what that entailed and our intentions. So, you know, the Blair Square Committee has spent a significant amount of time coming up with this conceptual plan. So the idea is that we would present graphics and do the presentation in a public forum to present the concept plan, and then solicit any public input, in which case we would incorporate that into the design development and construction document phase. So, you know, I'd say we're pretty close to 100% conceptual design. But then the refinement of the plan would be at the next stage.
Thank you.
Makes sense. If there's any other questions you guys have on that scope, I'd be happy to answer them.
So can I just clarify, come back to that? So the refinement, or I think you said both, so I want to make sure I understand you correctly. This current scope of work includes revisions that would be made following a public hearing?
No, it would not. It would just be soliciting the input. You know, we can probably chat about it, you know, in a committee meeting, just to discuss what is logistically feasible to input into the, you know, or incorporate into a new design, or the advanced design. But that would really come in the next phase, which is design development and construction documents. Or CD and CD phases would be in another scope. This is really just, this first scope was to kind of formalize the conceptual plan into some really nice renderings that the public can, can view, and then as well as have a meeting where we can outline all the points, you know, and expand upon a lot of what Kevin spoke about today, you know, in a public forum where we can get more, more input.
So if I may, my question then would be, is that enough? Do you think then the scope should be expanded a bit so that, just following what you were saying earlier, you were explaining that the next step would be those construction documents?
Yes.
It sounds like this current, thank you for clarifying, Reagan. I appreciate it.
One in between this and the construction documents.
Okay. So my question would be, should we, should the scope be expanded to get you to the point where the next step is the construction documents?
Yeah.
I mean-
Yes.
I think it has to be.
Yes.
Yeah, no, that would be in the next, I, I think, I think we're really, we've got a really solid concept, and then we present that, get feedback, and then we incorporate the feedback in the next phase, which is design development-
Okay.
And construction documents. So design development, you know, advances it to 75% call it. And then you have, you know, your construction documents, which are 100% ready to build.
So you're saying that the phase two then would be design development and construction documents? That would be the next? Okay.
Exactly, yeah. Yep, yep.
Okay.
So right now, we're probably at, I don't know, let's call it, you know, 25, 30%, you know, from a conceptual standpoint. And then we can go, we can take the feedback from the town at the public, public meeting, and incorporate that into that, those next two phases of the design.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else in the committee want to say anything? Awesome.
Any other questions? All right. So Kevin, I think at this point, you've got to pull together a proposal for Frank, and try to get some face time with the CPC before special time meeting. And definitely schedule some time with the finance committee as well. They like to hear about these things.
I have it, keeping them informed.
That's great. So I think that's the next step, with the idea that the next time we see you will be when you're ready to get that approved for the warrant.
And I would reach out to, I would, we'll get you Matt Zadok's information. I think he might, he might have some thoughts. He might not, but he might, he might be a good person to just check in with.
It's all worth it, put it all in right now.
Absolutely. I think he'd have some, he might have some good ideas, some input.
Yeah. And maybe at some point the documents can go on Hollison Cable TV, Hollison Reporter, let people get an idea of something's coming.
Chris is here tonight, or Yvonne is here, so I'm sure they'll, they'll be looking for your document. Yeah. Thanks for coming in, Kevin. Really appreciate it. Nice job.
I, I guess the, our committee is over.
Right. So if you want to make a motion to adjourn for your committee-
Make a motion, we adjourn the committee meeting of the Blair Square. Is there a second? Peter, you still there? Second, I think, Peter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kevin Conley, aye. Peter Barberi. Peter, we're taking a roll call.
He's not on there. The miners truck is, keep going.
Walter!
Yes?
Yes. Who's that? Eric, Eric!
Eric, aye.
It's three. We need Peter Barberi. I think he said yes before he hung up.
So Reagan's not on the committee.
No, she's not.
She's with Beal and Thomas. Okay.
This one, I heard him say yes.
I heard Peter say yes.
Yeah, I thought you did too. He was the first one.
So you are adjourned.
All righty, and this is a gift.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. It gives me happiness.
All right. All right, we're going to move on to the next item, the Lolland Street Truck Traffic Concerns Update for tomorrow night. Travis, did you want to say something? You want me to say it?
You can start. I can fill in where I am.
Okay, so tomorrow evening, this board will reconvene. We will conduct a public hearing regarding the Lolland Street area with respect to commercial truck traffic. We've received a lot of feedback over the last several months from residents and folks who use that area. Tomorrow evening will be a listening session, hopefully grabbing as many willing participants as possible. We're going to share a lot of information. We're going to learn a lot. I know I will. And we're going to take the opportunity following that hearing to team back with the stakeholders and the folks that have some action to create some sensible balanced solutions for the community to consider and for this board to act upon. So we will, we will start promptly. We will have probably a good sized Zoom. We'll go over the ground rules before we begin tomorrow evening, but the expectation is one that shares a lot of listening with some very factual information, hopefully from all sides. Do you folks have any comments in lieu of tomorrow evening? Expectations?
I'm looking forward to hearing some, some information. I mean, I've heard certainly some stuff from residents, and I'm looking for, and being able to ask some questions will be good. And I'd also like to hear from the business community too, to sort of see where they're at. I haven't heard any language from them, and I, you know, just being able to get some of the other stakeholders, you know, DPW, police, and, you know, planning and things like that, like what are our options, what kinds of things are out there. So I'm looking forward to it.
I'd like to thank Travis, by the way, for posting a lot of content on our website for participants to read up on. Go ahead, Tina.
Yeah, so I would just want to add, ahead of tomorrow night, I'll be looking for an understanding of the types of traffic management that we could see potentially along scenic routes. Having the state reps, having state agencies, having town council on the call at the meeting, I think will be very, very helpful. So I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking for information on where and how we could, if, if we decide to make changes to the traffic rules and orders. I will be looking for information, hoping to hear information on perhaps broadening a regional discussion on heavy truck traffic in general. Because in the end, a lot of changes, if we decide to make them, could have impacts on redirecting as we should, well, I won't add my, my comments or opinions here, but we could have an impact on adding more truck traffic to our state numbered routes. And I think we need to understand the broader regional considerations for that. So given that, I'll be looking for complimentary steps to be taken on those state routes. With any steps we choose to take that have a direct impact on the Lolland Industrial Park, I think that's got to be a part of the conversation. If you take a truck off of one street, you're putting a truck on another street. And I, I think that having, again, the state reps, state agencies, and town council on the call will be extremely helpful to understand that. That's what I'm looking forward to tonight, in addition to hearing from both the business community, who, who we have not, as you say, heard much from, and then the residents who have been quite vocal and are looking for a chance to share their comments. So thank you for your work on this, Travis.
Absolutely. And I would just add to Mr. Cronin's point, a planning board memo from May to the select board is on the website. That's an excellent sort of overview of the subject. There is a, a visual on truck classifications is up there, as well as a map of the area. And then to the point of sort of outreach, Blackboard went out to a pretty wide range. We have it on Facebook again today as a follow up as it was a couple weeks ago. It's been on the website, and the Hollison Reporter, it was on as well. And then, so we have been in receipt of letters, which I think was mentioned. So I'm compiling those. I think those should be mentioned off the top to say, you know, a few sort of neighborhoods have bandied together and written a letter together. Some people have written specific to their street. So we'll put all that together and probably mention that. The, the business community, I've actually had a couple of phone calls with. I'm hoping that, you know, we could sort of deliver the message that, that if they could get on the call, that would be good. If they can't, I'll sort of just have to write down my notes from those calls and share them with you. But hopefully, we will get them on the call as well. As we said, Rep Dykma and Mass DOT will be represented legal. We have a public safety component who will be available to us. And then, so the Mass DOT, I would just reiterate that, you know, these conversations after input tomorrow night, we'll needing, we will be needing to partner with Mass DOT, Rep Dykma, and those people moving forward on, on various issues that may come up tomorrow night that I'm not aware of at the moment, or we're not aware of. And so that will be all, all be valuable. But I appreciate the people who send in thoughts ahead of time, and, and we can certainly continue to collect those before tomorrow night. And I will keep you updated on any of those that we receive.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Moving on, next item, the capital policy changes. So last week, Tina, when you were out, we brought forth the changes that were recommended through conversations I had with Ann Louise Hanstead, with the school committee. We made a change to reflect some consideration for the fact that the school committee would have difficulty with some of the timelines within that policy. So we added a proviso that in consideration in deference to their school calendar, we would work with them to achieve their submissions. Mr. Sparrow had some thoughts to defer action on approving these changes until you had a chance to have some conversations with folks about, I think it was the last item on there, correct?
Yes. Well, particularly, I wanted to be able to have understanding of the CIP Asset Management Document, how it gets updated, who controls it, and some of the timing, particularly how the finance committee is involved in this particular process, and what kinds of information they're, they're looking for. So they, I used to be on the capital subcommittee for the finance committee, and it's kind of hard to be there because I'm no longer on the finance committee. But they have reorganized, and they're going to have a meeting on Wednesday that I asked for at 4:00, and Travis and I will be there to try to talk to them and get their input on the process, so we can have a better understanding of where they belong in this, in this particular thing. Because I want us all to be on the same page, because it felt like there was a lot of different messages. I mean, from my seat in this, the finance committee, that's how I felt. So I'm trying to consolidate so we're all talking the same, so that way the department heads know what to expect and what kinds of information they need from all boards, and they can do it once instead of duplicating efforts.
So we'll, we'll defer this a week. You'll have a report for us in a week.
Yes.
Just one point, that the, within the policy, it states 45 days out from-
Yep.
October 26th, presumably at the moment, which would be September 11th. So we would need to want to, we would want to get this done next meeting, but that would be fine.
Yes. The, my, our intention is to have something next meeting to discuss.
Great.
All right, moving on, board business. We have minutes for July 2nd, 2020, and July 8th, 2020. Folks had a chance to look at those.
Yep, I move to accept the minutes of July 2nd, 2020, and July 8th, 2020.
2nd.
2nd. All those in favor, say aye.
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 That is approved. We have appointments for the Blair Square Committee. Did you want to read those, Mr. Sparrow? So I catch you off guard there? Sorry.
Yeah, that's not hard to do.
It's actually, this, this first one is, one of the three of you get to replace Mark Aronian on the Blair Square Committee.
Yes.
All right.
So I actually don't have that in the packet because one of you needs to step forward or nominate somebody.
All right. Is anybody feeling it?
Well, I mean, I, it, it seems like Tina has a lot, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to push it on you, but I'm just sort of saying, it seems like you have been involved in this process with some, in some capacity.
I actually like the idea of you, Ben.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
Or Don, for that matter.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
So not me. Because I think that we should all bring a different flavor. I, I think I bring a very specific flavor, and I think it's well known what that flavor is. And I think it would be good to have another voice in the-
Sure. I'm happy to do it if-
Want to make a motion for Ben?
I do. I'm going to move to nominate Ben Sparrow to the Blair Square Committee as the member of the select board who is appointed.
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
And I abstain.
Ben will abstain.
But yes, no, I, I, I-
Thank you.
Look forward to it. I think that'll, that's good. So I will-
Very good. So now we are in the space of appointing alternate members to the committee. We are looking to, I got them, Ben, I found them. Mr. Herb Brockard and Martha Ellis as alternate members of the Blair Square Committee. Accept a motion to appoint both candidates?
Move to accept both Herb Brockett and Martha Ellis as alternate members of the Blair Square Committee for term through till June 2021.
Thank you.
Can I just, I'll second with a question. The documents that we have here says it's going from five to seven members. That's already happened. Forgive me if I'm-
So there's been a couple iterations of this, and I think I had it in the packet from last time. So essentially, these are alternate members. They vote when there's needs to be that many people to hit a quorum.
Okay.
And this profile was adjusted a couple times, and that was the last iteration. So they just need to be revoted and then replacing Mark Aronian. We were doing some research on, on the replacement, who's replaced, and we have it up to date now.
Okay.
These are the last two.
So my, my question is, is that, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, like, it, you know, it's obviously I don't have a problem with the people. It's just like making sure that we don't have to have a motion that includes changing the profile for the committee to include these, these members.
No, that, that was done. So the, the interesting thing about this profile is that there's a veteran, a Friends of the Rail Trail, a select board member, a planning member, a historic preservation committee, two at large, and then these are the two-
Okay.
That are alternates. Excuse me.
That's all, that's all I was asking, just if we had to change the profile in the motion. So I second, and I'm, I'm good.
Okay. And just regarding the select board members appointment, it, that person serves as long as they're on the board. Is that how it goes? Yeah. Or you relinquish the role. All right. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that carries. We have an appointment of Rebecca Wiseman for the Conservation Commission. This would be a three-year term.
I move to reappoint Rebecca Wiseman to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term. And along, so doing that, thank her for her previous term.
I second that motion.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
That carries. Next, we have a liquor license for a wedding on September 5th, 2020.
So I-
Got some questions here.
Yeah, I'm kind of like, given the current environment, I want to just, I don't have a problem with the liquor license itself. I mean, it is what it is, but I just want to- to.
How many people are drinking liquor?
Well, no, it's more like, how many people are going to be involved in this, is it, you know?
Yeah.
Acceptable to be socially.
Before you even get to COVID, I think we had put a moratorium on events at Town Hall because of the septic system.
This is the historical society.
I beg your pardon, okay.
547 Washington.
Oh, got it, okay, so now back to COVID.
Yeah.
Private business.
So it's, my, just my concern is COVID related, just to make sure that, you know, there's.
Chief, question.
Yes.
This is being held on, um, an historical property.
I've, I've been working with the, uh, managers of that facility, and making sure that they are complying with either the indoor gathering restriction, or the outdoor gathering size restriction.
Okay, so in this case, this would have been an event that you would speak to them about regarding, to Mr. Sparrow's point, the numbers, and the conditions, and so forth.
Correct.
Okay. Does that satisfy your interest?
So you're, you're okay with this, okay.
It's a, it's perhaps a random thought, but it does come up to me that, in my mind, that we, through the police department, had a moratorium on approving parades and gatherings, this will not go to the police for patrol, or for, not patrol, but for crowd control or traffic?
It's not a public way, so it doesn't.
Yeah, right, okay.
Unless they got a complaint.
Let's what?
They got a complaint.
Yeah, okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the liquor license request for wedding at the Hollison Historical Society on September 5th, 2020, from 3:30 PM to 9:30 PM.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second with a comment, and, uh, good for you for going ahead with the wedding, I'm sure you waited a long time for this, and I hope you enjoy it, congratulations.
Fall wedding, well, close to fall, getting.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Travis, we'll turn to you on the next item, which is the Stipend Subcommittee Appointments.
Yes, we have our first two, so we don't yet have a quorum, but these two, um, have some, uh, the letter of interest quote unquote, by email for Joan Shaughnessy and Shelley Bockner, um, Ms. Shaughnessy was previously on the school committee, is not currently seated on any committee, um, Ms. Bockner is on a group that is affiliated with the library, but is not considered a board or committee, um, and their histories are here, a longtime resident, uh, and interested in the Stipend Subcommittee when we discussed it on our previous meeting, uh, if I can answer any questions on either, and then I'm still obviously in search, for anybody watching, um, for three more seats under this scenario, uh, for our profile charge of five seats of individuals who are not currently on boards and committees.
I'll entertain a motion to appoint Shelley Bockner and Joan Shaughnessy to the Stipend Subcommittee.
I'd be honored to make that motion.
Second?
Second with a comment, which is to thank both of them for stepping up to serve on this committee.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Move on to other business, Mr. Sparrow?
I do not have any other business at this time.
Ms. Hein?
I do not have any other business, thank you.
Okay, just a reminder under other business, I'll just point out that we are meeting tomorrow evening, uh, to discuss the Lolin Industrial Park item, our agenda is found on the town's website, I believe that starts promptly at 7, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, so we look forward to participation tomorrow evening, uh, any other, yes, Mr. Erhert, go ahead.
One item of other business, as we are up against an MAPC grant deadline, the Sustainability Coordinator, uh, has a grant proposal that he would like to put in before the deadline of August 31st, but is due before our next meeting, um, so I would like, uh, approval this evening, so that I could have the Chair of the Select Board, otherwise known as the CEO of the town, sign this when it is prepared, um, it is an application for the MAPC Accelerating Climate Resiliency Grant, and it is essentially a public tree inventory, this is not done frequently, but it is, uh, very important for us, um, as a town that has quite a bit of open space, including forestry, um, we think that this is a, first of all, it's a competitive grant with MAPC, um, and we are concerned that, that there has been already quite a draw on this, uh, the MAPC covers 101 communities, um, but we think that this is a strong application based on what they're looking for in their criteria, it would establish